The time is 6:31 and we'll call to order the work session for City Council, March 4th, 2019. Roll call please.
Mr. Jones?
Here.
Mrs. Keller?
Here.
Mr. Browning? Mr. Rohr?
Here.
Mr. Hellinger?
Here.
Vice Mayor Schaefer?
Here.
Mayor Riggle?
Here.
And Councilman Browning will be about 10 to 15 minutes late. So tonight, we're going to have a presentation on Housing Need Assistance by John Malcolm and if you would like to come forward. If you could give us your names and address for the record.
John Melk, Executive Director of the Building Industry Association of Central Ohio.
Malcolm Porter, I work for John.
And before we dig in, I want to thank Council for having us out today. This is a great opportunity for us to talk about the home building industry and this study which we're very proud of. As we've unveiled this study in December, it's generated a lot of interest and I was marking to Sean earlier, I'm doing the tour this week. We are tonight here in Delaware and tomorrow in Lancaster and Newark and then on Thursday in Marysville. So we are making the rounds with this study, but it's a good thing for us. I started with the BIA about 15 months ago and like most people, I had read through the newspaper and saw, wow, the housing industry in Central Ohio, this is going to be great. And it is a great organization and we are doing well, but then you start to see some of this study and the fact is, we are not meeting market demands. And we're seeing that manifested in higher prices for consumers and lack of available housing for people who want to move into communities. So we appreciate the opportunity to talk to you as it relates to Delaware City and Delaware today. See if I can not mess this up. Elaine taught me how to use it earlier. So a few things that we did in our study. We took the entire 10-county MSA and Vogt Strategic Insights did this study in partnership with Columbus 2020 and Realtors and us. And we also took great effort to run this information through economists and other people to make sure that we were using the right sort of data. Because for me, sitting here and telling you, home builders say, we're not building enough houses. We understand that that may draw some eyebrows at first, but we're pleased that our numbers match up with Morpsy's numbers and other organizations, independent organizations' numbers. So the long and the short of it is, since we came out of the recession and have been working, household incomes in Central Ohio have risen about 1.1%. And our new home sales, as you can see, the cost has risen on those five times that. And the monthly rents have gone up two and a half times the rate of income. And that, again, signifies the lack of inventory in our community. This is the broad MSA in Central Ohio. And as you see, we were at, in the peak times, at about 16,000 housing units per year. A little something happened in 2007, 2008, which drastically reduced that. And while people drive around and they say, boy, there's a lot going on, there's a lot going on, as you can see by this graph, we're really not building anywhere near where we were during peak season, peak building times in the late 1990s and early 2000s. So we looked, we really wanted to take a look at how employment and housing played with each other. And what we did was, we compared our permit activity in the MSA to job creation activity in the MSA. Because as this presentation was titled, Homes Are Where Jobs Go To at Night. And we've also done a little research and are going to continue to do research on that relationship between where people live and where they work. And did some, read a study today by Dr. Jeff Kennedy and talked about if an employee lives within five miles of their home or works within five miles of their home, the retention of that employee is something like 20 to 25% higher. And for employees that have more than a 30-plus minute commute on a daily basis, not only are they less likely to be retained, they're less likely to apply for a job that is more than 30 minutes away from them, which means that your applicant pool is weaker. Their performance on the job is not as strong. And there was a really interesting study done in Chicago with O'Hare Airport. And it was, it had to do with their employees that service the food on airlines. And a solid job pays anywhere between $15 and $20-plus dollars an hour at entry level, but they had significant turnover. And the way that they combated that was by really putting emphasis on getting local applicants because they found out that they were pulling too far away from where the job was. And they had to raise wages to make the job a little more attractive for people who lived in close proximity, but it was a big factor in improving their retention rates. So those are some other things that we'll be working on. But the big winner is this. 1991 to 2017, 276,221 jobs in Central Ohio. Over that exact same period of time, 276,169 permits. The folks at Vogt spent probably two days confirming these numbers because they could not believe that they were that close. And most economists will tell you, approximately 1.25 permits to 1.5 permits per job is the sign of a healthy economy. In Central Ohio, in the past few years, we've been at approximately six jobs per housing permits. So if 1.25 to 1.5 is healthy, we're at a very not healthy state. And Delaware County is even worse than Central Ohio is total. We took a look broadly at what the income need was going to be by income level. And as you can see, the high end and the low end of the scale in the blue signifying renting On the high end, we've done an okay job taking care of the folks who need, on the higher income levels. And we've done a not-good job, but there are a few more resources there on the subsidized housing side. Where the biggest demand is, no surprise to anybody, is what we call the missing middle in housing, the middle-income workforce housing. And over 200,000 units are going to be needed in Central Ohio between now and the year 2050 in just that middle-income workforce housing. So what does that mean for Delaware County? And it's interesting, I was speaking at Delaware, Delaware City, the Chamber had an event for their infrastructure committee. And we talked about, a little bit about this. Mr. Bowserman, the county engineer, was there. And when I told him that in the, our study showed that the county is underbuilding by about anywhere from 2,000 to 6,000 housing units per year, he, I think he was a little bit shocked, but that's what the numbers show. That if the growth in Delaware County is going to continue, that there needs to be built somewhere between 31,000 and 8,000 housing units per year. So again, we like to tie job permits to housing and building permits. And we use two different scenarios, one from 2010 through this year, or 2017. And the second window is a little longer than that. One projects growth of 2.094%, the other 3.81%. So you see up to 2018, those are the housing permits and, let's see if I can use it yet, right there, about that. Hey, about that. And as you can see, even if you are on the lowest growth trajectory, we're still significantly underbuilding the market. And if we're at the high end of it, then we are severely, more severely underbuilding. So what's the growth rate, projected job growth in Delaware County over this time? Anywhere from 100,000 jobs to 250,000 jobs. Again, number of building permits issued per year here, we're just over 1,000 permits in the county. And I know that the city had a record year in permitting. And believe me, my members are thrilled with that. What this study, I believe, shows is that there is much more capacity and much more demand. So again, tracking permits issued per jobs in Delaware County over the years, you can see, the jobs gained here, while there's still been a significant amount of growth in jobs, we're still not building as many units, keeping in mind that 1.25 to 1 and 1/2 housing units per job ratio. And I believe at the state of the county, I think there was 3,500 jobs created in Delaware County last year and just under 1,800 permits issued. So here's the need by income. Obviously, on the high end, that's a significant number of units, but as you look at, again, the missing middle. And what I'll call to your attention is the diversity of that, in that there is a need for rental housing that is significant over these years. Over 25,000, 30,000 rental units needed in this area for just middle-income folks. It's a trend that's continuing to grow, especially as younger employees enter the workforce. They're delaying their purchases. Younger first-time home buyers are actually older than they used to be. People are renting for longer periods of time. And that's not to say that they could not maybe afford a house, they're opting not to. They like to have rental units. It gives them flexibility. They may not have enough money for a down payment, but they make a good wage on a monthly basis. Student loan debt kind of creeping into that ability to pay for a down payment. So we're seeing people rent for longer periods of time and the first-time home buyers later. That means we need to have more of a higher-end rental product when available. This is the second scenario. Again, same numbers, still showing that the meaty middle needs to be met for both rental and single-family ownership. So get asked all the time, what is it that drives the cost of building and why can't we build an affordable house? Is number one question we get when we go out. And I will tell you this, I've been in this job 14, 15 months, I have learned that affordable housing means a different thing to almost every individual we talk to. So we are focused on housing affordability, which is a little different. And that is making, if you earn a certain amount of money, that there's something, a product available in your range that you can buy. This is not a problem that you can say, we will solve the subsidized housing industry and that will take care of housing for everybody else. It won't work that way. You're just pushing the air out of the balloon into somewhere else. There is a demand across the market that need to be met. NHB has these, what they call the five L's. The cost of land, the cost of labor, cost of lumber, cost of lending, cost of local government. Land prices have gone up, labor has gone up significantly. We are trying our best to work on that. In fact, on Friday, we are going to have 100 and almost 60 kids out at our Parade of Homes site at Evans Farm for trades at the parade day, where they get to learn about the trades and about careers in the residential construction industry. Article in the Wall Street Journal on Saturday showed that the residential construction industry is one of the great opportunities for people looking for work at a good wage, almost $30 an hour, when it's averaged out. And there is a great, significant need. And not just residential, commercial, the construction trades have a huge gap. And what's that done is it's increased the cost of labor and it's also delayed projects. One of the biggest challenges our folks have is getting mechanicals out to install the HVAC, to install the plumbing, to do that sort of work. It gets delayed. And when it gets delayed, it increases the cost. So that's something that is a huge problem. The Career Center is going to be one of those groups that's coming out. We're excited about that. I think we have almost 50 kids from the Career Center coming out to the parade site on Friday. Cost of lumber has gone up and steel. Those are what our folks build with. It has dropped somewhat, but a lot of the tariffs had an impact on the market. And while it's come down, it's still higher than it was. Cost of lending has gone up and the cost of dealing with many local governments has gone up as well, which we often get asked, what does that mean? Fees are a huge part of what, of the building process. And I want to start out by saying this, our members realize that there are fees to be paid for services within the city and where we build. That's a given and we realize that. Whether this, we're talking about TAP fees or for multifamily, those master meter fees, tree replacement fees, impact fees, those are all fees that go into the calculus of building a home or building multiple homes. And they are included in the price of the house and they do add to the cost of the house. And bonding, another example that, of something that we're working on in different municipalities, some are better than others, of driving cost. Development standards and design standards, again, huge role in the cost of a house. I can tell you that, for example, we're in one, working in one community in greater Central Ohio, where a proposal on the standards of the house are going to raise the cost of the house approximately $65,000 to $70,000 to construct. No homeowner is going to get $65,000 to $70,000 out of those changes. In fact, it's reducing the square footage of the house, which is the one thing that you actually can get some appreciable value out of. But it was, this community has made a decision that that's one of the things that they wanted to change. And the answer is, by and large, from folks, we can't afford to build there. The market will not bear these costs where we're at. Processes, the longer it takes to get from point A to point Z in the construction of a home adds cost. We were in another community in Central Ohio where the processes have increased from three to six months. And for a builder and developer, adding three to six months onto a process, again, no appreciable value to the resident that will be moving into that home has only cost, adds to the Again, I'll reiterate that I know that our members on some, in the building community, if something needs to be fixed, we obviously need to work to make those, to make that fixed. But it's a huge part of, I think, what we're excited about here is working with city councils and with local governments to make these processes better so that, A, our members are aware of them and that they work efficiently for us. I'll wrap this up and answer questions you guys have on our study by saying, we are projected as a region, and we are a region now. A region that's growing. And if you look at what has happened in Central Ohio over the last 20 years versus what has happened in the rest of our state, we're very fortunate. I often say that my colleagues in Youngstown don't have this problem that we have here. We're due potentially, according to Morpsy, almost a million people. It is going to take 457,000 homes to accommodate these people and continue the economic growth of Central Ohio. And I would challenge people to find me a community that has stayed the same size and continued to thrive. There is no right-sized municipality in the United States that's had prolonged success and growth. Our wages in Central Ohio have gone up appreciably more than those of our competitors, of competing cities across Ohio and across the Midwest. In some communities, they've not grown as much as others. I think that's an opportunity to do what we can to make, to make businesses believe communities are more attractive. I said in an interview I did with a TV station, that in my mind, the most innovative communities are the county seats of the outlying counties outside of 270. That includes Delaware, Newark, Lancaster, Marysville. They have the infrastructure in place, there is great opportunity, people are familiar with them. You drive here, downtown is busy. And a mayor, the mayor of Lancaster told us when we were out there, he made a great point. He said, we have brought eight or nine new restaurants here. They're busy Friday and Saturday. We need to make sure they're busy Sunday through Thursday. And we do that by bringing good jobs and good people here. And this is a great opportunity for us. It's a great opportunity for our members to engage and we're thrilled to be here to talk about it. I, again, 457,000 homes. The thing that makes me nervous is that in many communities we've gone to, it's, you are right, John. We don't, we believe the study. Take it next door. And we, as a region, will not succeed under that approach. Again, that doesn't mean, that means different things for different people. The city of Columbus is going to take a different approach than the city of Delaware and it's, and the city of Delaware should most certainly take a different approach than the city of Columbus. So this is not a one-size-fits-all with a lot of solutions. And we're just here to answer any questions you may have so we can meet that demand and be a good partner for the city moving forward. With that, Malcolm, did I forget anything?
I'm just to reinforce the last point there. I mean, we've not come tonight with a, here's a top 10 things we would ask you to consider doing differently. It has been our experience as we have begun over the last few months to talk with communities that we have to first start off with this, getting our arms around this idea that Central Ohio is becoming an elite American metropolitan region. And for those of us who've got gray hair like me, that's not an easy thing to get our arms around, the idea that we compete not with Akron or Dayton, but we compete with Austin and Charlotte and our companies compete from, you know, there and around the world. And so this idea that somehow we have a message that we're not building enough in Central Ohio is not an easy, it's not intuitive. I haven't had anybody go, you know, I finally seen the numbers because I've been thinking that all along. That has not been the reaction. And, you know, you've had a record year here. There are other areas that have had good, strong years. But when you look at our region in Central Ohio, we build by about 50 to 90% fewer new apartments and homes than the Charlottes, the Austins, the Nashvilles. Those regions have figured out collectively how to put themselves on a growth path that is significantly different than ours. And if it continues down that road, they won't be our economic competitors. They will, they will surpass us. Right now, we're comparable in size, comparable in household incomes, but we're not trending in that, in that pattern. So before we get to solutions, we kind of have to make sure we take the time to go through and people understand what the challenge is. And John said at the beginning, it's the right kind of challenge to have, but yet it's a challenge nonetheless from, from our perspective. And when you look and say that we build less today than we built in the year 2000 in this region, that's, again, not something that's intuitive for people. And so we want to start off as a part of a process and talk about the challenge and we can get to reactions. Your reaction's going to be different than Marysville and Columbus, as John's indicated. Thanks, Mayor and members of council for a chance to come and lay some out, lay something out that, that we hope has value for you. I know you're just starting up your comp plan, your process for renewal, you're maybe midstream in it, if Dave's lucky, midstream. And we would hope to feed this information in for your consideration as any parts of that plan goes forward.
I think part of our frustration is, I hear that we can't get companies to come here because we don't have the workforce. They pull from other areas to come and work for them. We need affordable housing and as you said, it's different for everybody. We think we need to go to the companies, find out what they're paying and kind of work it backwards to kind of figure out where, where that house needs to be priced at. But then our guidelines right now, they're going to have to start shrinking because our guidelines on our comp plan, they're bigger houses and that's not going to be affordable. So it's just, it's not a mess. We have to figure this out correctly. We're also having apartments coming in wanting to be smaller than what our guidelines say. And we're hearing this is a trend, this is happening in Columbus. I want to believe them, I don't know if that's true or not, so we're having to adjust our guidelines in order to get these apartments here because they say they have to in order to make the numbers work. So there's just a lot of, a lot of moving parts right now that we're trying to figure out.
Absolutely. And NHB is the National Association of Home Builders, of which we're affiliated. And I think for the third consecutive year, the average size of single-family homes sold in America has gotten smaller. It's still 2,500 square feet, which is my house. And I'm sure my kids would find a way to fill up the extra square footage with toys and such. But you're seeing a trend. Publicly traded company here in Central Ohio is MI Homes. And if you look at their most recent quarterly earnings report, their most popular model is what they call a smart home, which I believe is somewhere between 1,800 and 2,200 square feet. It is their most popular seller in every other market. They can't build it here because of lot size demands that are too large, you just can't make the numbers work. So there is a demand out there. And I know, you know, if you head down to the Dublin's of the world and you go to Bridge Park and you hear about a 600-square-foot studio apartment going for more than most people pay in a mortgage, it, it is a trend. I think our builders and the building community have done a good job of making the square footage more livable and usable and functional so that maybe we don't need as large of a footprint. And that's a trend we're seeing is more functional and usable spaces. You will see in our Parade of Homes this year that the lot sizes are significantly smaller. And this is that, obviously, on, at the high price point, but even at the high price point, smaller lot sizes and smaller square footage than we've had in some, in many years. And it's just, consumers have not balked at that, so long as it's functional. But to your point on right sizing the workforce and housing, I'll relay an anecdote that we heard from Columbus 2020, which was when Amazon came to do their 2.0 search. They didn't come armed with tax attorneys and people trying to get abatements. They came armed with HR people who had two questions. Where are people going to live and how are they going to get to work? And that's a question that I think most places are starting to bring. We heard of another community that lost, Columbus suburban community that came in, had scoped a site and, and found out that their workforce wasn't going to be coming from there. So they moved towards Lancaster, where they thought most of their workforce would be coming. And I think these, we have hung our hat in Central Ohio on two things really, cost of living and ease of commute. And we have a, we run the risk of losing both of those as we continue to push further and further out and as we do not allow for construction that can meet the demands of the market. It's going to inflate prices. And those are two things that I think are, long-term, should worry everybody for years to come if we can't get it right.
Mayor, your comment about regulatory environment maybe not quite being aligned with the market is not unique to the city of Delaware. What is unique frankly, is your willingness to take time tonight for all of you to be here to at least, you know, begin or continue some conversation along those lines. And I think from our standpoint, we would be ready to work with staff and elected officials to figure out what are the options that would best, you know, position your community in the way that you want to have your community positioned. It's ultimately your decision, not ours, but what we can best do is give you our best information about what your voters, our customers, none of us gets to make these decisions in a vacuum. And so it's big change inside our world. We've got a lot of companies, multi-generational companies, that have done things the same way for a long time. And that world has shifted underneath them, just like your comments about how the market has shifted underneath the regulatory schemes and structures that municipalities have put in place. And some communities are quicker, if you will, to try to recognize and say, what do we want to do in response to that than others are.
Well, 12 years ago, all we heard was, we have to have built-up housing or move-up housing because they're moving to Dublin, they're moving away. So we did a lot of that and now it's all reversing backwards. So.
What's old is new and new is old.
Exactly. Reaction is a reaction. Comments from council? Questions?
I got just a quick comment and a question. Everything you said about the need for the number of housing and the cost and all that are important to us and how development standards are changing. But to me, the other big thing about this that you got to hit on is, this isn't just about housing. housing. This is really about economic development and jobs because everything you read keeps talking about how important it is for people to be able to live where they work. So for me, that's one of the goals is to figure out what that housing need is and then figure out what we need to do to elevate the supply to housing because I think Sean would tell you that we're losing out on potential job growth because there's not many places to compete with. The second thing is you talked about processes and I think we've worked really hard over the last two years to try and improve that. So I'd just like to get your take. I mean, I think we're doing a much better job of trying to streamline that where we can and still hold up our standards. What's your people's take on that?
Yeah, so I've been around a little longer than John, so I'll go, I'll go forward there. And, and I think we very much appreciate the ability to engage. Tom and staff throughout the city have been a part of working groups in a number of different areas over the last couple, three years, and, and we appreciate that. What I think of when, when, when we have these kinds of working groups with cities and other local governments is trying to find areas where you get to preserve your regulatory structure that, that protects public interest in the most efficient way possible as opposed to the way quote unquote, it's always been done. And it's trying to reflect the, what changes can be made that, that preserve key decision-making points so that you fulfill your public charge. And so we will continue to want to work with you. Delaware City is an important part of this market. I think will become a more important part of the Central Ohio market. You're trending more relevant, if you will, rather than less relevant, and, and that will mean we will want to continue to work with you on processes and procedures that can hopefully strike the right balance where you as elected officials are comfortable that you're meeting your public charge and at the same time can do it in the most efficient manner. That value that's either reflected in a rent or a purchase price, you know, is the, the thing that we're trying to maximize. And so as I said earlier, our companies are dealing in a very different environment today than they were 10 years ago, and they're, the ones who are succeeding are, are working on constant improvement. And so we're trying to do the same thing with you, and we appreciate those opportunities. And to your point about economic development, for the, for all the years that I've been around as a part of, of the BIA, that's the part that is the biggest shift that's happened just in the last few years is that nexus between workforce and housing and, and what that means for, for growth. So.
Other comments? Questions?
I have a couple. I'm just curious if any of this data or information is specific to Delaware City or the region in general.
So most of our data is, pertains on a countywide level. We have done our best to try to drill down and we will continue to try to pull more information specifically to the city and pass that information along to Tom as we did it. We limited resources. We had to focus on, on a countywide level initially.
Interested in particular to the statistics 1991 to 2017 for the jobs to housing units. And I'd really like to see a specific number for Delaware City. How many permits we issued for housing and then how many jobs added during that same time period?
When they come up, they could give us that.
Okay. To see how we compare to the region in general because my concern is that unless we are having equal conversations about economic development and putting as much focus as we are into residential, then what we're doing is building a lot of housing units for people who live here and go somewhere else to work. And that's a concern just based on the city, being able to pay our own bills. We need people to live and work here.
Absolutely. It's a, it's the classic chicken and egg argument.
And we think at least based on, on what's emerged in some of these conversations over the last, say, six months to a year, that that actually becomes a potential competitive advantage for Delaware, that, that some suburban communities, and I differentiate Delaware as a city and entity in and of itself as opposed to maybe in Franklin County where you've got suburban communities that, that have come up where they don't have the ability to respond to this change in the marketplace and provide proximity to workforce, proximity to workplace for their, for their workforce. So to achieve the balance that you're speaking to, that that's an opportunity for you to, to have an economic development tool that, that some communities don't have. And John made reference to one case, and we've heard some anecdotal examples of location decisions being made based on that commute time.
And I guess I would chime in too, that I think you are seeing, beginning to see more creativity in the development community around mixed use where there's commercial tied into residential. I think that's a trend that we'll probably likely to continue to see grow throughout the region.
Did you have other questions?
Nope.
Chris, George?
Tom and I were at a coma meeting on Friday with Mayor Ginter and.
Steve Shoss.
Thank you. He gave a talk about the affordable housing and how it's changing in, in Columbus themselves. And then a few of us piped in and said it would be nice to have it for Dublin and Delaware to see so we can help create this and see what's actually needed and how do we get to this affordable housing. So they seemed pretty excited about that.
It's a, it is, I think it's an issue that impacts every community. And I know down in Columbus, they're doing a bond initiative and trying a few things, but it is, it impacts every single community in Central Ohio. And I think our members and through affiliations with, we have a lot of our members, whether it's companies like WODA or Homeport that are, are really working to, to tackle this affordable housing issue, are starting to move out, outside of Columbus because they see the need there. And it's something that we need to work on as a region.
There's no single jurisdiction's going to solve any, you know, I'm not sure there is a single solution. I'm very sure there's not a single solution. What solutions there are is not going to fall in one jurisdictions. Baileywick and we're all going to go back to, back to normal.
I know Morpsey's helping on that one more for Columbus. That's why we asked if you could also incorporate some of the other cities around and other municipalities, so.
And we would be pleased to push them on that as well as they continue to work through their planning. And I think they have something coming out in April.
Yes.
Sure.
I was curious with the demographic and from our analysis that you had done, you had mentioned about, you know, Columbus and the, the, you know, Central Ohio area compared to the Austins and Charlottes of the country. And I saw an interesting article about Columbus and some of their demographics and those job numbers that are fairly large, but the change whereas 25 years ago on a per capita income, the jobs that we're generating, that, that's trending down. And if we looked at the job generation and whatever that number was 260 some thousand dollars, how that tracked with average income level of those new jobs or average pay of those new jobs versus in Austin or Charlotte, because there's a huge difference if you're creating 250,000, 250,000 jobs that are paying on average 17 dollars an hour, maybe around here versus creating 250,000 jobs in Austin that are paying, you know, 25 dollars an hour as far as the affordability index with housing. And I was just curious if you added that element to it because it's, like I said, the article that Columbus put out, they're saying what they're seeing though, and in, in, in Ohio, we were pretty reliant on income taxes and that, I've done analysis here tracking over the last 25, 30 years, our population growth and our income tax collections per capita adjusted for inflation, it's not coming up. And I know whenever council members ask about our ability to pay is all growth good and to what extent and how does that really relate? But I was just curious if you, if you matched up that element of it in the, from that standpoint to say, you know, we're just not generating the type of pay for the jobs that are being created.
Dean, we weren't, we were not able to do that prospectively. We had to do that retrospectively. So we chose Charlotte and Austin and Nashville as peer cities, not only because they're in the economic development world linked, there, there were choices by others, not us, but we do have comparable average household income. So when I say we were able to do that retrospectively, it's around that. In terms of future growth and average wage and future growth, we didn't have that piece of that puzzle for, for this study. This isn't going to be our only bite at this apple. It was our first bite, and so we had to start somewhere. And we're believers that goods not the enemy of perfect. If we were still looking for perfect, we'd be at 15th and high in an academic institution and we wouldn't, we'd still be studying how to do the study and we'd be, you know, and, and so we needed to start somewhere. But I think your point's well taken. There was a story in the paper today, Columbus, you know, outlining for the city from their finance folks, the, the very challenge that you put forward in terms of wage growth and future jobs.
Just wanted to think not to put you on the spot. I know you didn't want to comment specifically about whether the impact fees or capacity fees or, you know, what, but just in general, to, to actually create quote unquote, housing that, you know, people can afford to live in, do you think it's more a factor of those sort of fees or the densities? I mean, you think back 20, 40, 50 years ago and the companies that had their company housing, I'm not sure society wants to move back towards that, but do you think there's that possibility of having higher density housing in proximity? Or what, what, what would, what would be something that would maybe start addressing that challenge?
So I'll go first and John will grab the microphone back, I'm sure. But not, not only for, you know, whatever you want to call workforce housing, but also for housing affordability or affordable housing, any of those terms. To me, densities are the kind of 800-pound gorilla that are in the room and, and will be our challenge for individual communities and for our region for how we grapple with that. I would suggest my experience would be that, that in almost all cases, whether you're in a, in a suburban community, in a city of Columbus urban setting, or in a county seat environment like we're in tonight, as a general rule of thumb, less density is preferred over more density. And that has to do with a, an expectation and a perception of quality and that, that's going to be one of our biggest challenges. There's no doubt that, in my mind at least, the density issues trump almost all other issues that we're talking about in terms of cost.
And I'll piggyback on that. One of the thing we hear pretty regularly and I, I, there is no correlation between the size of the home, the size of the lot and the quality of the home and the size of the lot. There's just, it, it does not exist. Could be a 600 square foot apartment somewhere, 900 square feet can, you know, is of the highest quality. The price and the, and the quality of the home have nothing to do with the size. And we want to make sure that that's, that's something that I've learned a lot. But for a builder to answer your question, Dean, I think to know that we can get, you know, if you were looking at how many units per acre, adding that an additional half a home or something along those lines, it makes the math much easier. And it, it quite frankly, it conserves resources, both environmental and green space. And it's, in many cases, easier for the city to service as opposed to when we're building out lots that are so spread apart, if they're a little closer, a little easier to service.
So we should build tiny houses then?
You know, I get asked about that occasionally and I, I don't know that we're ready for that.
I know more people ask me lately that they just want to downsize and there's not enough cities.
Well, I will tell you, it's interesting because speaking of downsizing, the 55-plus rental market is one of the top, top hottest products out there right now. And it's something that Ohio as a state, while Central Ohio is a younger, is one of the younger cities in the Midwest, Ohio as a state is one of the older states in the, in the union, and there's a great need for that. And it does help cycle product through where somebody is able to move out of their home into and stay within their same community. It's huge. Same doctors, same grocery store. And in many ways, it opens up product for other people. So it's a, it's, it's a trend that you would not have thought 12 years ago or, or, and it's, it's, it's a very real trend and it's very, I think it's here to stay for the foreseeable future. I'll leave you with this as I know you have other items on the agenda. We know as, as a group, we've got a, we, builders must do a better job of communicating with elected officials and with the governments that we work with. And it's our hope as a BIA that we're going to continue to do that. We really appreciate Tom, staff and members of council inviting us out here. We are also working at the State House. We realize to Councilwoman Keller's statement that we have a, a state tax system that is based on where people work and not where they live. And that is not necessarily, in our opinion, the best way that we should grow. And, and there needs to be some balance to that. We also realize that school funding in the state of Ohio has been criminally broken for 20-plus years and needs to be fixed. One of the, in some communities we, we go to, they say, we simply cannot have you build because there, we don't have room in the school. And while I understand that in a way, it is a tragedy that a school system would never say, we can't take your kids. And we need to make sure that schools are funded equitably in Central Ohio. It's a challenge because we have counties and, and districts that are growing and others that are not, and everybody's trying to hold on to what they have, and there's not enough resources to go around. So we are, we are working to try to explain our side of the story and the importance of those issues to our legislators as well as continuing to work with environmental groups and talk about the ways that we can improve what we do on an environmental side to lessen the impact of building on the communities that we serve.
Thank you very much.
Thank you all very much.
Are you going to stick around for the rest of the meeting? But we may need you again.
Thank you.
Sean?
Good evening, Madam Mayor, members of council. Thank you for having me this evening. I'll piggyback a little bit off of BIA's presentation here, kind of drilling down into the workforce side they spoke about. You know, obviously what we're talking about this evening has an impact on, on every facet of economic development, whether it be business retention, expansion, attraction, or even business development, if you look at that as the other pillar. Just to say some, some fluctuating statistics about the city, on any given day, if you pull up Indeed, which is one of the primary job search engines in the country, there's, you know, anywhere from 500 to 1,400 jobs open in the city at any given time. That can be anywhere from 2% to 6% of our employment basis. So not, not the people, not the actual workers, not the job force, but the actual jobs that we have in the city, 2% to 6% open at any given time. That in itself is a serious problem that will continue to grow. So I'm going to start off talking a little about the business retention expansion side because I think that's really the side that, that the workforce or the housing issue impacts the most, quite honestly. And that's the side that we have to be very considered of because that's really our, our huge tax basis right now than the, the people living here and paying their income taxes as residents, it's the businesses paying that income tax and as well employing people. So as you know, we, we have the second most aggressive BRE program in, in Central Ohio, just behind our friends at Dublin. And of that, we visit all of our 55 core industry employers. And those core industry employers can be blue collar, 50/50 or completely white collar. If you look at a, like an international paper, blue collar mostly, 50/50 or 60/40, that'd be more like an engineer material systems and a substratum would be a complete, you know, pretty much white collar job force. Of that, 45% will indicate that to us that they have serious concerns about our workforce housing situation. Now, that doesn't sound incredibly high. Now, that doesn't sound incredibly high. But again, remember, I'm talking about blue collar, mixed and white collar. If you talk about completely just blue collar, that number's going to jump up. We really don't have a lot of ways of pulling that. But if you pull, if you go to the white collar spectrum, that number's going to seriously drop down. So just want to keep in perspective of what we're talking about here. And as I think, as I go through some of the numbers here, it becomes more clear. Of that, I will say that, you know, 100% of our restaurant retail employers are saying that there's a workforce housing issue, a serious workforce housing issue. Why? Why is it a problem? Well, if you look at Rent Cafe, which is a great website that does, delves down into rental statistics for given communities, and they do look at just the city of Delaware. A one-bedroom apartment in the city of Delaware, on average, goes for $705 a month. And that's a smaller apartment than you think it is. That is a 660-square-foot apartment, is $705 a month. That grows at an annual rate of about 2%. So, you know, if somebody gets a 2% raise, it's eating up on your rent every year. Think of it that way. So if somebody starts out just in the city at $13 an hour, and you take the 30% rule of putting 30% of your wages into your housing, you can really only afford a $776 a month apartment here. So you're not even getting that one-bedroom apartment there. And there's a lot of employers here that are only paying about $13 an hour. It would take about $13.56 an hour, or $28,204 per year to afford that one-bedroom apartment using the 30% rule. So that is a typical distribution job here. After about six months, you're in that range. So you can start affording that one bedroom. Unfortunately, that's just a one-bedroom. So if you have kids, you know, and whatnot, that obviously escalates. A two-bedroom is $928 a month, and that's 1,033 square foot. Servers in the city of Delaware, going to the restaurant retail side, only make about $25,500 a year. Now, that's not including tips. I will be completely honest about that. But that's their base wages typically in a given restaurant in the city. So you can imagine that is well below the $13.56 an hour there to get that one-bedroom apartment. So then you're talking about, you know, having roommates and whatnot to get by. If you don't have a spouse, it's picking up the rest of that bill. Warehouse workers, going back to that, on average within the city, so you're talking about people who have experience in a distribution center plus those entry level that I was talking about earlier, make about $32,800 a year. So they can afford, at the 30% rule, $822 a month for an apartment. Again, two-bedroom apartment is $928 a month. So they're below the 928 threshold for a two-bedroom, if they're just a warehouse employee. So the food service industry, on average, if you don't count just the servers, annual wages are $23,280, just in the city. Building and grounds maintenance and repair, $28,190. Personal care services, $25,000. And office administration support, $36,000. And production workers, on average, are $39,000. So these, even production workers, blue collar, good old blue collar, white picket fence, what we used to think of in yesteryear, are only making $39,000 on average. That's only getting you in that two-bedroom level. In fact, of the 10 occupations in the Columbus region, regionally, this is according to the Affordable Housing Alliance of Central Ohio, of the 10 occupations with the most annual openings in a given year, only one, that's registered nurses, are paying enough at the $17.04 per hour to afford housing in our region right now. Rents are rising at twice the pace of income. Your wages are not growing significantly, and that's really across the board, whether it be blue collar, white collar. The poverty population has grown more than three times the rate of the overall population. And that's actually even growing in the suburbs, which you never really saw that before. You know, it's pretty much contained in urban centers, urban cores. To combat this, from a business retention expansion standpoint, Kelsey and I have to rely on a lot of other tools. I mean, it's, you've heard me talk in the past that 80% of our labor force for our blue collar jobs, it's coming from Marion, Morrow, Licking, Fairfield, or not Fairfield, Licking, Franklin, and Union County, it's pretty much in that order. Well, that has obviously huge challenges. They touched on it in terms of retention. You find that the companies that are getting most of their employees from a larger distance have a much higher turnover rate, period. And that's for a lot of reasons. I mean, transportation costs, you know, if somebody's spending $3,3500 a year to get back and forth to work, that obviously significantly cuts into their ability to afford housing and childcare, which childcare tends to be the other big issue that we see with our workers that are coming from a distance. And we're actually working, trying to find childcare providers right now. You know, your economic development team gets on all kinds of topics. We're trying to work with childcare providers right now to get second, third floor childcare because it's not something we really have. But obviously, that's really hurting the companies that have those two shifts. They can't find workers for those shifts to commute this distance. We're also constantly working on transportation solutions. We're still, you know, surrounded by rural county. If you look at the northern part of the county, and we don't have a real strong public transportation infrastructure here. We're not served by Cota like Dublin is, or like even Polaris to the south. So we have to rely on other ways of getting people to and from work if they can't afford cars on their own. And, you know, we're working with organizations such as Empower Bus, things like that. But even at that point, unless you negotiate that cost to be shared with a worker, that can cost a typical worker $300 a month to just ride up here. And we have tapped into a large pool of workers from the north end of Columbus right now, and they tend to be on the refugee and Puerto Rican immigration side. But they have to have a way of getting up here, and these are the solutions that we're finding right now, if we can't build houses that they can afford. The other side is the attraction side, the business attraction side, and they touched base on that. I can tell you, just last year, there were, and we, you know, sometimes we get feedback from a company, sometimes we don't, when we lose them. But I know three instances last year where companies did flat out say, you don't have the labor force that we need. Two went to the Dayton region, one went to Licking County, saying, hey, you know, they've got a wealth of labor force. It's a less costly place to live from a cost of living perspective. So then they can get the blue collar labor to even move close by there. But even though it's an instance, we used to do a lot of our site visits, the presentation part anyhow, at the Chamber of Commerce. Once the Chamber of Commerce, they have their big information booth out there. You know, they're the kiosk with all the apartment literature and housing literature. Yeah, that's a mistake. We had a Japanese company come in, and they pulled one of those flyers and like, this is the price of housing here? And like, well, you know, that's part of it. But that's the first thing they saw, and they couldn't get that out of their mind. We don't do that anymore. We don't go there. But that's the first thing that they got stuck in their mind, is that, well, this is a really expensive place. Another one of the companies that went to Springfield, Topray, went to Springfield because, again, it's a very blue collar friendly community. So it becomes a policy, Dave and Tom and I were talking earlier today, it becomes a policy issue on economic development. And we have started pushing that way. I mean, obviously, in the last several years, most of our job creation has been on the white collar side. There's nothing inherently wrong with that. But, and that is serving our labor force, if you look at that demographically. I don't need to go into that again, you guys have heard that for six years from me now. But the other side of the coin is, is those types of jobs still require service industry jobs. They require your restaurants, your retailers. I can't tell you how many times we hear, why don't you have this retailer? Why don't you have that restaurant? Well, if we did, we wouldn't be able to employ. I mean, if we had an Applebee's come in tomorrow, same we do, please strike that. They wouldn't be able, they, you wouldn't be able to fill the 45 jobs that would require operate that restaurant. It would be nearly impossible. They're faced that down in Polaris all the time, and that is a hotbed of retail because retailers like to be around other retailers. And they have a lot of apartments, but as Dave can attest, those apartments are expensive and not really set up for labor force housing either. So, yeah. And, you know, from an attraction standpoint, having those here, having a very strong downtown with restaurants and whatnot, obviously helps us out a lot. So that is the other side of the coin that we can never forget, is we're not even just talking about the industrial or the office jobs or whatnot. We're talking about the folks that are operating mom-pa restaurant or retailer in our community, and how are they able to find people and keep them here and survive?
What did you ask me earlier about model jobs?
The number of building permits we issued versus the number of jobs added.
He can probably give us the number of jobs and he'll give us the number of permits.
You want it historical, right?
Yeah, because the BIA gave us numbers about the region, and I want to see how we compare in Delaware City.
Yeah, we'll have to.
It's a 10-year time period. I mean, if you look at the work that we do, plus just the natural organic growth, I mean, you're probably talking close to 10,000 jobs. So I don't know what housing.
I think that answered accurate. I mean, I don't carry those numbers going back to 1991. We had to do a little bit of work to put that then together with some of the job creation to get a closer metric to what they use.
I think an important next step to all of this is actually seeing how some of these BIA numbers compare to city-specific numbers. I'm also curious, just, you mentioned that certain, I think you said 80% of our blue collar workforce comes from elsewhere. I'm wondering what percent of our white collar workforce leaves to work.
80%. It's a, well, yeah, and it's funny because you think that's a trade-off, and it's not. I mean, you're picking up, you're losing about 16,000, if not more, employees per day. And then you're picking up about 3,600. But also, that's a loss for us in terms of taxation because we give a credit to everybody who's going to Columbus, right? And a lot of those are white collar employees, they're going to Chase, they're going wherever. If you're giving them a 50% credit, it's a lot of money leaving our coffers that we could be capturing, I think. And I did a calculation once, and I didn't want to share that with anybody because I haven't run past Dean. But, you know, it's a pretty big number. And, you know, the, I hate to say it, but the 3,600 that we're bringing in, they're lower-wage jobs, so while you're capturing them, it's not a, it's not a good trade. It's a losing trade. It's off balance.
Yes. Okay.
Any other questions for Sean? All right. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. Have a good evening.
Okay, comprehensive plan review, preview, by Dave. Before you start, what year did we do the one for you? Do you remember? I was trying to think of that today.
That was before my time here, so I think it was the early, it was the early aughts?
Oh, one, oh, two, I think.
That was on council, I'm sorry.
It was right around that time. When did you start?
I was just wondering.
Three, four.
Comp Plan was adopted in '04.
Just allow us to complete the comprehensive plan. It was kind of basically a timeout. Let's complete this plan and then figure out what our strategy is going to be. Because we were just getting inundated. Maybe that's what drove down some of those permits.
I don't think it was particularly long.
No, no, it was like nine, six to nine months.
Madam Mayor, members of council. So my charge in batting cleanup tonight is to give you a little preview of next month, I guess. And I want to pick up on, start by picking up on some of the themes that you've heard tonight because we've been talking a lot about that in the comprehensive plan process and at the steering committee. As many of you have been following along, you've been coming to workshops and input sessions and certainly following along with the updates as they come out. I have a couple of my staff here tonight who are working on the plan, Diane and Jordan. And I have a number of steering committee members, despite the fact that I just got a note out Friday about a whole schedule here for this spring. They're here with John and Mike and George. So we appreciate them being here tonight as well. But you can see that, you know, they're interested in this topic. And I think it's because we've come at this a little differently, as you might expect. But it's the same kind of themes. And I'll just give you a couple of macro numbers. I know Lisa's looking for more Delaware numbers, and we certainly will be providing, and we have provided a lot of those in the process. In fact, I think we've maybe spent a lot of our steering committee time doing too much talking and throwing numbers at them. But you have to, you have to know this stuff. You have to get kind of educated with it in a pretty intimate way. But just a couple of things from some other studies that I'm reading. I've obviously read the BIA report. I think it's good data and good information and sent that to the steering committee, and that's information we need to take into account. But we're looking at things as diverse as American Planning Association Draft Housing Policy Guide that would go out to all members. And it talks more about sort of affordable housing, capital A, affordable, low and moderate income housing. But it has a lot of the same themes in it that their report did. There's a lot of mesh points there. The Joint Center for Housing Studies out of Harvard University has produced a housing study every year since 1988, which is sort of a snapshot of housing in the nation and has a lot of themes that are also dovetail into what you're hearing and what we're talking about. Morpsy, of course, demographics. And then we will come down, and part of our scope with the Comp Plan is to utilize some of the subconsultants to give us a Delaware-specific look at the housing market, but also some of our economic development items as well in the southwest area. And one of the sessions we had with the steering committee was Randy Gross coming in and giving his initial idea of overall kind of economic development demographic numbers for the city in particular, which were very interesting. And again, there were a number of themes that start to emerge when you start to put all of this together. Even if you take the source with a grain of salt, there are any other sources, there are themes that start to come together, and we're talking about them tonight. But here's a couple of just macro things from my research, and I've really been getting into this with the steering committee and consultants. Nationally, it's pretty clear, and most studies are suggesting that millennials are driving much of the rebound in household growth. Household growth is important because as you form households, then you tend to acquire housing, be it rental or, in many cases, still the majority, 60/40, a little bit more than that right now, homeownership position. So, and they're a huge demographic, equally as big in some ways as the baby boomer demographic. But they, interestingly, though they are forming those households and they are buying homes and they are driving the housing market in many respects the last few years, they are not forming households at the same rate as past generations. And that's key. That's critical. So if that trend continues, they certainly will be looking for, I think, a much more diverse housing stock. It isn't that all rentals are an answer and all single-family home DTs are an answer. I think one of the strengths of our community, what has made us strong, is our diversity of employment opportunities, of housing stock, of downtown, of neighborhoods and communities. Their strength in that diversity. So on the other end of the spectrum, by 2035, not that far away really in the scope of our plan, one out of every three households, one out of every three, will be at least 65 years older or older. Let that sink in for a second. 10,000 baby boomers are turning 65 every day in this country. So you have both ends of the spectrum right there. And there are those of us that are caught in between, you know. The extras and all the rest. But very interestingly, I think, we are not replacing ourselves in this country, population-wise. And so in terms of growth, most of the growth of population in the United States in the year 2040, the vast majority of it will be immigrants. And in fact, in some of our new subdivisions, even in this county, in this city, we are seeing a large immigrant population buying homes and moving into rental opportunities. Right now, that share of growth of population, growth of population now, is about 42%. It's estimated to go up to about 60. growth of population now, is about 42%. It's estimated to go up to about 67%. It's another demographic we have to, have to think about a little bit. Adds to maybe the diversity of our community. And I think picking up on a theme the other two speakers mentioned is that incomes have clearly not kept pace with costs, in a lot of respects, particularly housing costs. A theme in their report, Sean mentioned it as well, that is an issue. Hopefully, it is a short-term issue, as things come more into equilibrium, but that is a significant issue. For example, 25 to 34-year-olds, so millennial types, they had increase in incomes of about 19% from 2013 to 2016. It's about $17,000 and change on average, on, on the median. But that was about 40% lower than that same group, in accounting for holding dollars constant, 34, 39% lower than that same group in 1995. So the power of the dollar, purchasing power, the purchasing power of a home, the cost of a home is rising. Incomes are not rising to meet that. That's, that's a dynamic we're going to have to just deal with, and certainly some of our economic development efforts can head to that way, and certainly regionally and statewide, that can head that way as well. So I'll wrap up pretty quickly. You've heard about a lot of the changing housing market. We've talked a lot about that in individual cases. We've heard of a housing need, just the growth of the central Ohio region, if that is to come to pass, and the morpsy projections are correct. They certainly were well done. And a link between employers and employees from a housing and locational perspective. And there's been quite a lot of work done on that. And perhaps the, the fact that there is a link between those two right now in the physical world, but there's certainly a link in the study world, and there needs to be a tighter link between those two things. So, in April, what we will do with you is share some of the results of our public involvement with our citizens up to this point. They are saying some things in a little different way, but they're saying, they're, they're touching on a lot of these themes. We will go over some of the initial land use thoughts and some of those economic base analysis thoughts that are emerging. And we will put you through, hopefully, an interactive exercise, if you'll participate, that will be kind of like what we did with the Steering Committee in December, which was very detailed. And we took a look at, and this is where we just look at it a little differently, not density and those kinds of things as much as what kind of development types make sense for the city, development types. And then what kind of building types within those development types make sense? And then where locationally might it make sense? Does it make sense to focus on a Southwest area for economic development opportunities? Maybe some mixed-use opportunities in our Southeast area, where we already have big investment in infrastructure and obviously housing going on, and maybe the East Side, downtown, riverfront district, and then maybe to the north of town, unlike the current plan, that's, that's for the next plan to kind of focus on. So we could really focus in on some, some of our geographies that might make some sense. But we'll go over that with you and ask you in a more filtered way than the last Steering Committee meeting to help us, from your perspective, talk about development types and building types and, and the location of those within our community. And that will feed right into, to our process as well. So, and a lot of those themes that are emerging are mixed-use and, you know, maybe some different kinds of development types and building types than maybe we thought of before. You can think of it as missing middle. You can think of it as other types of units. But there is a, there is a portion of the spectrum of housing that we, we're not capturing in new development that can help add to that diversity and help add, long-term, to the strength while meeting market demands as well, we think. We have a lot more work to do in that regard with our consultants and our Steering Committee. But they're engaged and they're doing a great job, giving us feedback with, with their thoughts. Happy to answer any questions you might have.
Questions? Okay, thank you.
I just wanted to mention that work that Morpsy is doing, they have been approached by Columbus to take a look at the whole, the issue, not only as it pertains to Columbus, but the broader area. And I think we'll, we'll want to have a, I think, play a role in that. I want to say, because I was here for the 2003 update, that these conversations about housing are a whole lot different than the conversations we were having in 2003. The issues in 2003 focused on, we talked about move-up housing, we talked about X percentage of our housing stock would be over a certain number of square feet. We were really focused on the size of the homes.
Size of lots.
And the size of the lots. And so, we had a, actually had a task force that was set up by the City Council in early 2000s that kind of looked at that, that kind of informed some of the work of the, of the Comp Plan Committee. But that's a whole lot, discussions are radically different today in terms of what we're looking at. And I think, I think Council, what we're trying to do is provide you information, make you informed, so that as we go through the Comp Plan, because the Comp Plan ultimately has to be adopted by you, the guidelines, the recommendations. So hopefully, you'll be better informed about that. And a lot of that starts with the conversations that we're having this evening. I mean, it's concerning about this mismatch in terms of the, any number of the different job categories. And I think we have to figure out, well, how do we, what are the ways to address that?
Well, if one out of three, 2030, 1235, one out of three will be 65 or older, how do we convince the builders to start building ranches? It costs more money to build a ranch, I understand that, but ranches are so hard to find anywhere. And I don't know how to do that. You just can't convince them.
Yeah, like part, I, you know, part of it is our localized market. That's a national statistic, obviously, but part of it is also, they are building more ranches than they, than they have traditionally, and they're, they would like to build some of those on smaller lots and smaller footprints, but with more what we would term universal design, so that you could perhaps age in place, or you could age down from a bigger house into, into that kind of unit, and provide the opportunity for move-up housing, that sort of thing. That would be a sort of a normal market as well, but with those two age demographics, I think, dare I say, I think we're maybe in a new normal here, where we have to deal with those two things. And the housing market is going through some fundamental shifts. It's going to be here for a little while.
So, further discussion?
I think, kind of, for me, the large question that is just kind of floating out there is, what does development actually cost us as a city? In trying to get our hand around, you know, if we build a 200 parcel subdivision, what are each one of those houses costing us in terms of the services that we're required to provide? Because if we get ourselves into a position where we're too off balance, where too many people are leaving to work elsewhere, and we have too many houses to service, that's not sustainable. That's not growth that's paying for itself. So in all of these discussions, I think that it's important to make sure that we stay in balance and just have answers to the finances of what these things are costing us.
And to follow up on that, Tom, I know we had that report on impact fees, but at some point, we're probably going to get back to that, because that leads exactly to Lisa's point about what is really costing us to provide services for these households.
And maybe at some point, we're going to have to take away part of that credit to balance it all out. Not necessarily for roads. I know where you're going. I could see your eyes.
No, no.
But I don't know. If we can't get them to stay here, then maybe we can take away part of that credit.
But I think, if we can't get them to stay here, I think there's so many people that would love to stay here, but can't find, I mean, I know for my family in particular, Sean talked a lot about the retention of having to drive far away. You know, I think we need to be worried about our white collar people that are having to make that commute out as well. So, just trying to find that balance of how do we keep more white collar jobs? If we have 80% leaving, I think we should be having a work session on that. And how do we keep those 80% from leaving before we talk about raising, you know, raising the cost for them to live within the city?
We're in office of three women that work in my office. One lives in Mount Gilliat, and has worked there for 22 years. The other one lives in Apple Valley, and has worked there for almost 40 years. So your statistics went out the window in my office. I live three miles from home, I mean, three miles from work, but it's just interesting. Yeah.
Okay, I'll just throw something out to start the discussion started. So, there's so many moving plates to this thing, you know, it's hard to figure out what to focus on first. But one of the things that's clear to me is that economic development is dependent on housing. To keep jobs and attract jobs, so people are working and living here, we've got to have the right housing. And your point of bringing in more businesses is dependent on that, because as we've heard, they don't want to necessarily come here, they don't think the workers can stay here. Remember, there was an article in the Dispatch about a month ago, talking about affordable housing, $20,000 in 2012 quarter. It talks about the problem with workers living a long ways away, that they, the cost of the commute is more, the cost of daycare is more, and if they have a flat tire, they don't come to work. And it was on to talk about, as your new restaurants come into town, if you can't keep a workforce there for them, if there's not someplace for them to work, then pretty soon it becomes hard for the restaurants to keep work. So, to me, just focusing on that, one thing I think we have to concentrate on is multifamily housing, because I think it's our most affordable way for workers to live. And in order to do that, I think we've got some policy decisions that we need to make. Take any development, somebody buys a bunch of land and they want to come in, and they figure that to make it work for them, they need 200 housing units. And part of that is based on what it costs them to build there and what they can get for rent. But our density requirements may not allow them to build 200 departments in that area, and so we ask them to build 180. Somewhere, the two factors I think we need to think about is not only density, but our multifamily tab fees, because they'll tell you again and again, that part of the reason that they have to build the density that they need to build is because that's a major factor in the cost. So, I don't know what the answer to that is, but I think that's a starting point. If we want to attract, if we agree we want to attract multifamily housing, what needs to change so that we can do that? The other piece that Carol and I talked about, that they're doing in Columbus and in other cities, and I think you were part of that conversation, where they're actually incentivizing developers to put so many units in these multifamily places that are priced at a price point where your average worker can afford them. So whatever that $700 and $700.
Like this on Austin.
And they're incentivizing. Columbus is doing the same thing. And in Columbus, if you can't do that, or won't do that, you have to actually put money in an affordable housing fund, like we do with our trees, you know, to kind of cover that. So, I think there's some policy issues that we could tackle, that would at least approach the area of affordable and multifamily housing, would give us a start in keeping workers here and hopefully then attracting businesses here as well. So, just throw that out, something to talk about.
Any comments on that?
I read the same article, and I thought the subsidy, as far as ideas to what to do, I thought the subsidy idea was about as good as any, that allows a builder to build something that is profitable, but also allows for some affordability there, too. I, yeah, you look for ideas, and it's like, that sounds as good as any, really.
And it was just a small portion.
Yeah.
You know, I don't remember, there was two step-ups, and the one in Austin, remember? We went one department, and then we went to the next one, and then it's the third one. And I don't remember the ratio. Something to think about.
I just worry about infrastructure needs when we start talking about density, just thinking where. Because I don't, I don't know that the density is necessarily the issue, just trying to imagine where we have the infrastructure that can manage large numbers of people without creating more congestion than we already have. So I'm kind of curious where you're thinking. If we did incentivize a development for affordable housing, where would that go?
I don't necessarily know, but I think it's one of those chicken and egg things, you know. By bringing more people in, that also increases our revenue stream that we can do. I mean, it's a.
But does it? That's, that's one of the ultimate questions. I don't think we have the answer.
It's a big tax issue. Hopefully, it does. Yeah. That's what I mean, there's so many moving plates of this thing. It's hard to decide where to start, but we have to start somewhere, or we're just going to keep doing what we've been doing and expect things to change.
Right. I know one of the questions I had when I first got on council was, and I remember asking Dean this, if we have all these people, our population is going up, why don't we have more money to deal with? Where's all that money going from all of these new people? And we just heard Mr. Siller say again this evening, it, it isn't necessarily keeping pace, that there isn't necessarily a net gain to more people. And I think until we answer that and wrap our brains around, do more people mean sustainability and more money for the city, that has to be a factor in the decision of our growth. Because if it's a net loss over time, then where are we going with this? Where's the sustainability in that? That's the part that concerns me, and I really want to be able to wrap my brain around that piece as we talk about responsible growth.
So really, we should look at, take the Southeast corner and want to like find an average income for that, you know, folks going to Columbus, that's what I, so find an average income for those folks, and then go, okay, we need that number. Take the cost of building, and then look at income taxes over 20 years, and just see where, where it goes.
Exactly. I mean, just, it's not going to be a perfect science, because there's so many variables that come into play. But just to get an idea of, for each, maybe each quadrant or ward of the city, what are the average incomes? Where are people working and living, and, and how all of this balances out as part of the discussion?
And how do we, in that piece, measure up in terms of the number of people that are moving into that housing unit? What are we getting in effect fees, and is it adequate? We cover the cost of the services?
Yes. And where are we with, George asked a really good question also, with our capacity for providing services? For our, where are we, how much capacity do we have left in our sewer system? And are we saving enough capacity for the economic development that we're hoping to attract? Because if we don't have any left, and then we have that business that comes in and says, hey, I'd like to build a business here, and we say, we can't provide sewer service because we're already at our capacity, then what happens there?
So I, I have been putting that together for you guys. I've got some spreadsheets that are just about ready to now to you guys. It's utility usage growth over the last 10 years for, I have a little bit more for the water, the last 15, 20 years. But don't worry about that. We're okay.
Okay.
We're, we're good there. So, we're about, we're about halfway on both.
Okay.
That's a, a quick enough summary of what you're about to get, probably.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Check that box.
Good. So what's the next steps? Who's going to be working on these, these things?
I think there's a, so George had requested some information, what you were copying on, what we're working on, in terms of the housing pipeline and some of these capacity, what's our capacity of the system. Lisa has asked previously and more recently, in connection with the Gerdman Annexation, for a little more analysis on this cost of, cost of service and what, what that income is. And I'll be following up with Dean on that and Dave. And then we have the work session on the first, which is really, this kind of feeds right into it, because I think the Comp Plan Steering Committee needs to kind of hear what, what council's thinking. And Dave, is there anything else that you can?
Well, I think a lot of discussion is the same kind of discussion that we've been having at the, at the Steering Committee, and the committee members here tonight can correct me if I'm wrong, but I think, I think we're having the same kinds of discussions. And we need to get some more detail. We need to drill down through that detail. But I also think if we can come out of this conference of plan with maybe a little more focus in growth areas than we had in the current one, which was somewhere on the neighborhood of, I don't know, 20, 26, priority growth areas. It's kind of hard to have that many priority growth areas. That may be part of the solution to your, your questions, Ms. Keller and Mr. Schaefer as well. So if we can invest, focus in where we have redevelopment opportunities, but also where we have infrastructure opportunities or economic, clear economic development opportunities, like in the, in the Southwest. That started to be a theme that's clearly emerged from citizen comments and from the Steering Committee as well. The exact location, the exact how, the exact development, you know, those things are yet to come. I will say that some of, traditionally, what we would say is, get the policies in order with respect to our comprehensive plan, and then look to some of our implementation tools. A principal one in land uses the zoning code, but there are other development-related ones as well that, that then, after we get the policies and. that, that then after we get the policies in place that council desires, that those are the implementation tools we should take a look at in addition to maybe impact fees and the rest of it. As we know that the world doesn't, we know from project meetings, all the department heads here, the world doesn't stop and wait for us to go through this process. And in part, that's, that's a good thing. If we were Youngstown, it, it probably would right now, but here it doesn't. So we just have to deal with those as they're continuing to come along under the plan that we have today.
Do you think we can have these developmental costs by April 1st? No?
Not to be blunt, unusually not, but it's, it's a challenge to cost things out without having, I mean, and even the format that you might discuss about things, because it's, they're not yes or no type of issues. They're not give us the little real clip thing. We, we tried several years ago and I was looking for, it was Randy Gross, I think, was doing some work. We did the exact same thing. We broke the city down into quadrants and we looked at the impact of the new housing and what they were generating in incomes and what cost of services were being allocated to those. And my sense is that that's, and that, we paid somebody quite a bit of money to spend hours and hours and hours doing that. You know, as Dave said, you know, we got lots of things going on here to sit and focus on doing that. I'd love to do it, spend three weeks doing nothing but that, probably could come up with some decent information. But I think if we pull that report back and say, have things dramatically changed and maybe update some key elements to it, my sense is the conclusions that came out of there aren't going to change depending on the type of housing that was built, especially with the way our tax structure is, you know, reduce credits if you work in Columbus and whatever else, there's a point there that if the housing's above this level, it probably pays for its services. But below that, it probably doesn't. And so we can probably wrap our hands around it, but it's, it's going to make the challenge that these guys mentioned even more difficult. Because, you know, when you, when you come to services that are provided or, you know, somebody living in a $300,000 house, going to demand more fire EMS service or police service than somebody living in an apartment that might only rent for $600 a month. I don't know, it, it's, it's, it's challenging sometimes to attach that level of service to that. But I think perhaps if, if that's an approach we can take and get that out, if we can get our hands on it. I think Tom, you're.
Yeah, it was the fiscal impact analysis that Tischler did in 2000. In fact, I hit, it's referenced in our comprehensive plan.
What year was that?
Oh, three.
Okay. So that's, a significant amount of time has passed.
Oh, yeah. And there's, I'm sure there's an updated model for looking at this, but it is not, as Dean said, it, it had conclusions, some of which were supported by the Comp Plan, some of which we've seen today and others that, that aren't.
So if we included it as part of the last time we did the Comp Plan, why aren't we including it this time?
That's what I mentioned in my, a new one.
A new.
We are, that we were going to update that, one of the things the consultant team is tasked with, I think, is taking a look at.
It is, and, but to Dean's point as well, and to your point, circumstances, the world, our world is different than it was then. So simply replicating that report and updating it, while good for going into this Comp Plan by any measure and given, given where we are as a community, I mean, it was useful. There are also different ways that you go about that today. But the vice is a subconsultant on the comprehensive plan team, consultant team, and they are tasked with doing that. That's toward, more towards the end of the, well, in the next few months, so not by April. But to take a look at that so that we can at least have that bit of information. As you know, it's, land use is very nuanced and it's not necessarily the case that, well, if the house doesn't pay for itself, we don't want any more houses because houses create people that come to downtown and spend money and do, and work and do other things. So eventually you'll have to get to a decision point as to, you know, where is that point? Where is that point in, in that house not necessarily paying for itself? Particularly if you want affordable housing and those sorts of things. Traditionally do not pay for the services.
But I think it.
It's good information in that.
It's, it's fundamental to me because if we're talking about getting, doing away with a credit, you know.
It was a good idea. I didn't say we were.
That's a, that's a huge.
Take that out.
That, that's a huge policy decision. And if we're to the point of actually talking or thinking about doing something like that.
I mean, I think. The, the challenge somewhat with, with, with the analysis and on the revenue side, I think it's fairly straightforward, I think it gets pretty decent. What, what revenues are coming in from different types of development and where? The expenditure size is a challenge because it's based on policy. It's based on your level of service. You know, our level of service for street maintenance maybe isn't where we want it to be, but we're not spending maybe at that level, so we're living within that. Does, you know, how you quantify what the cost of services are, are somewhat dependent on your level of services. And, and we manage our resources to keep our services within our resources and probably will continue to down the road. So, you know, it's kind of tough on the service side to come up with a cost of service. I mean, we could take, add up all of our budgets of some sorts and divide by our population and say, per capita it costs this. But like I said, sometimes it's, it's more a factor of your level of service that you had in place. And then it drives that just as much.
So are we or aren't we redoing the fiscal analysis as?
Well, I, I think I indicated in my email this afternoon that I've got to get with Dave in terms of the scope of that work that, that is anticipated. And, and especially in light of some of the more recent questions you've asked about the annexations and other, just the other questions of what the, what's the fiscal impact of these things and get with Dean and, and figure out how we address that in a way that is informative and helpful in terms of your decision making. But it's not going to be, it, it won't come back, I don't think, and be, it's not going to be black and white. It's going to be, there's going to be a lot of gray in between in terms of, does it make sense to grow at this pace? Now, I can tell you right now, if we were, I don't, we had, we don't have the capacity, staff wise, to double, to even up by 50% the number of payments that we issued last year. We just don't have the capacity. We're just, we're like, we're at this level. And I think that's where our services are as well. So that's the other piece of this is that there's this deficit of 8,000 units. We're building 8,000 a year, but we should be building 14 and that, how does the deficit get made up? I don't know how we would, how we would manage that. And that's the other issue is just the, the sheer volume and how do you deal with that? And, I mean, because once the homes get built, then we've got police calls and all the rest of it. So it's a, it's a complicated, complicated issue. It's got a lot of pieces to it. But I think in response to your earlier questions and more recent, what's been talked about tonight, I just have to follow up with both Dave and Dean and figure out, how do we address this in a way that it's informative for you and helpful in terms of your decision making?
Do other people think that having that analysis repeated would be helpful info?
I think it would be helpful, but I don't want to wait until the strategic plan is done to make any decisions about how we're going to address some of the issues that we've talked about tonight. I don't think we can afford to do that. And even when that analysis is done, as Dean says, I don't think it's going to be a black and white type of thing. I don't think as a city, we can just say we don't want any growth because cities that aren't growing are dying, you know? I think we have to be somewhat proactive about, what we're doing right now is reactive. Developers bring us a project planning commission, who comes to us and we, yes or no? I think we need to be proactive. I think if, if we think that we need more affordable housing, I think we need to take steps now and make that happen.
What are we basing, we think we need more affordable housing on?
Because what we're, what we're hearing from everybody is that for businesses to come here, they can't do that because there's no place for the workers to live. We know we've got a shortage of multifamily housing from all the statistics that we've read. So if we're going to do something to address just that issue, we have to make some decisions about that. And if multifamily is one of the ways we can address it, and I, I think, I don't know how else we can do it, then we have to decide how we're going to encourage that and at what level we want to encourage that and how, you know, I just think we need to do something rather than wait a year and a half and let all this information come out.
I understand where you're coming from. I'm just concerned that making that decision without having any idea of the fiscal long-term impact is almost irresponsible. Just being reactive in terms of people who build houses are coming and telling us we need to build more and we need to build them faster. I need a little bit more evidence than just that. I'd like to perform, and no offense to the work that you've done because it's very thorough and it's, it's excellent work, but I'd like, I'd like some more info about our particular city and the fiscal impact here of this path that we're on. I think that we have any shortage of development that's happening now.
Not a shortage of development, but it's not, to me, it's not just the building industry telling us. It's Sean and it's the businesses that want to come here telling us that. And it's not just us, in everything you read about affordable housing, it's the same issues in every city, that they're having trouble attracting and keeping starting wage jobs because there's no place for people to live.
And I think that's part of the discussion of what businesses are we after? Are we, are we trying to capitalize on that 80% of white collar that's leaving? Or are we trying to get more blue collar and, and having them be able to live in Delaware? I think we sort of have to decide where our focus is going to be also. Because we may be missing businesses because they don't have enough blue collar workers. But how many opportunities are we missing for white collar businesses? Sounds like the workforce is here and they're leaving. So it's ready as we are now, it sounds like it's ready. If 80% of white collar are leaving, bringing white collar keeps the people we have here.
That attracts more.
Well, and that's, that's exactly the, the issue and that becomes a land.
We just had that conversation with the consultants.
Yeah, you know, it, I think we have put a lot of our efforts in the last several years towards mostly the white collar side. I mean, you, you look at workforce study, effort for a study, we have a huge number of engineers living in the city of Delaware for a lot of reasons. We have a huge number of engineers living here, well, they're all working elsewhere. So, you know, it's one of the reasons we looked at the specialty aftermarket park and things like that to try to get those people to stay here and work here or start businesses here because a lot of them are entrepreneurial. I think the efforts that you've done next door with the entrepreneur center are huge steps towards showing that we have the capacity to build white collar jobs here. We are not a 270 outer belt suburb, unfortunately. I do think, I was telling Dave and Tom this today, I think that Salmo Parkway is actually becoming more of kind of an outer belt road. If you look at how it's developing to the south, going north, we have to be conscious of that. As that continues, we're not developing in a vacuum any longer. So how does that impact our ability to do what you just said? I mean, I, I think that there's still potential for, for the blue collar. Don't get me wrong, I don't think we should completely ignore that because obviously a company like Engineered Materials, and I keep using it as an example because they are a model company, you know, 40% of their labor force is still blue collar. There's still mostly lab space, mostly office when you go in there. Anyway, any of you that have been in that building, you walk in, the first thing you see is offices and then a huge lab area and then a production area that has actually very few people in it because the blue collar jobs, and this is a chicken egg thing too, or horse cart, wagon, wherever. Companies, and there was an article in the Dispatch that was completely wrong a couple of years ago, that said that companies continue to innovate because it's cheaper to have robotics do things. No, companies are putting robotics in place because they can't find employees. Robots show up to work every day, they do their job, they don't complain, they don't have kids that get sick. They don't have all these things that humans do. So companies are forced to have to, to do automation to keep up with demand and, and production. And it's just a simple issue. So, I mean, whether we, we want to be white collar or not, or the world's already stirring, go that way. I mean, if, if I want to go work on that robot, I've got to have some level of, of education training that's going to earn me more money. Now, I'm going to have to go get trained for that. So there's whole workforce development issue that we never seem to be able to get our arms around. Now we're saying kids shouldn't go to college. Well, I don't know if I agree with that wholly because if I work on a robot, I'm probably going to have to have a form of education. So as, you know, again, it's issue after issue. Everything we talked about earlier today, everything's interconnected and combined and impacts every decision that we make. But, you know, I think we have made some good strides on, we're not seeing it percentage wise in terms of the number of taillights that are turning around and staying in our community yet, maybe like a 2% difference. And that, the numbers aren't, that's one number they don't update very frequently is your matriculation number, unfortunately, I wish they did. But I think we're making a small difference. I think we will continue. And I, I think that one of the reasons you don't see your income taxes growing significantly is that, you know, if somebody's starting a business here and they're a white collar, you know, the first few years, they don't make any money. They're not reporting any income, they're putting it all right back into the business. I mean, how many of you guys have businesses, you're doing the same thing? Putting it right back into the business. So we're not seeing that because they haven't started making anything yet. After year three, five, or year five, they might start too and they might, we might start seeing that. But, you know, that's, that's the problem with that. And that's a long, that's, that's what you call the long game, right, not the short game, so.
I think Councilwoman, we just had a discussion with our consultant team and Randy Gross, part of his task as well is to look in that southeast, southwest area in particular, not confine to that, but with the focus on that area, which is huge. And the geography of that area is varied. You know, there's one side of 42 and there's the other side of 42 and there's sort of the legacy, other industrial areas we have. What if his focus is to give us some of his thoughts based in, I mean, it's fine if we want to have nothing but office. What city doesn't want to have that? But there's not that much office to go around. So part of his task is to look into what's realistic in the marketplace, trying to address some of your questions there, and maybe it is, maybe it is all office, that'd be great. But it's probably going to be some sort of mixture of uses. But that will help us break that geography down a little bit and also give, inform us, help inform us a little bit about maybe where we need to make some other infrastructure investments in that area to be proactive, as Vice Mayor Schaefer says, towards the kinds of businesses that are reflective of the market that we think we can get and that would also address our community overall. Those will come out, not all by April 1st, but it's a, it's a, that's why it's a sort of a year and a half process to get through some of this.
When the legacy office parks are dead, I mean, you know, when we talk office, we're talking more mixed use. And how do you intersperse office, smaller offices and with residential and retail?
Could be workforce.
You know, the Coglin Crossing project had a lot of capacity to do, still does have a lot of capacity to do that in a smart way. But again, she needs to get over the housing situation right now because I know she's struggling with that, trying to get apartments into that complex. Because that's where it all starts. If you want apartments, you need rooftops, or if you need retail, you want retail, you need rooftops to drive that and then the offices will follow that too, so.
I think another component that wasn't well studied back with this plan, and it's understandable, was, was really the mixed use component, mixed, mixed residential, maybe mixed commercial industrial office, and then the true mixture of residential and, and those kinds of uses. Those are the, those are the kinds of analyses that we want to go through this time as well because those are different kind of development typologies that, again, might add to that mix and diversity. So in the downtimes, they're not maybe as down as if all our eggs are in one basket, so to speak. But it also produces a diverse community with housing options for, for a range of people. This is exactly what these guys are talking about.
You have to be a little bit careful about what the numbers tell you. Not that Sean's not correct necessarily that 80% of our white collar people are going someplace else. But having been here a long time ago, I remember when the population in Delaware was about 20,000 people in 1990. And, you know, I don't have anything to cite, but I'm guessing our employment levels aren't a whole lot different than what they were. Employees, employers based in Delaware, whether it be white collar or, or blue collar. And we had some pretty large blue collar entities and, and we've replaced, and then we do what we can from that standpoint, but we've added 20,000 people. And I think what's occurred, the somewhat of the dynamics is Delaware is an attractive place to live. And so people are moving here. I mean, I see it time and time and time and time again, the people moving in. They work in Westerville, they work in Dublin, they work in those places. They live here because they can get a 20, 300 square foot house for, well, I don't know anymore. It's, it used to be $250,000 and that same house costs them 350 south of here. So we're adding more white collar people living here, doesn't mean we're losing all of our white collar jobs. You know, as David said, you can't just say we want those, there's not that many of them to be had. But, you know, the fact that 80% are leaving, I mean, that's just a function of people moving here that, that work elsewhere and that continues on an ongoing basis. And so that tends to distort that number. And it might have been less, you know, 25, 30 years ago. might have been less, you know, 25, 30 years ago, but we have to ask ourselves, is that a bad thing? Is that a good thing? What's the effect of that? And, and part of the study that was done, I don't know if it's, I still think that was, there was a Randy Gross study, but it, you know, that, that credit, that half credit, does that pay for itself or not? And we were looking at is economic development more, business to, or residential? You know, if you have the right mix, the residential growth, you know, especially if we can change the state law and say you pay your taxes if you live, wouldn't that be a boon, wouldn't fall to us? But that probably ain't happening anytime soon. But, but like I said, you need to be a little bit careful with sometimes what the numbers tell you and what, what that dynamic is. And, and whether that's looked at as a problem or not. Because we could be adding 5% white collar jobs or 2% of white collar jobs each year since 1990. And I, I'm, with all the population growth, that number leaving is probably still going to be going up. So.
Okay. Anything else? Could we get a copy of that study?
Yeah, yeah. I, yes. It's in, actually, when I sent you today is the conclusions of it, but I could send you the whole thing.
Okay. I didn't see it if it was sent today.
Yeah, it was just in that quotes management. There's something in our current complaint. Dean and I are talking about the same things. Yeah.
All right. Chris had to leave. So that's why he skipped out of here. I will remind you all that the survey is due by 3:08 for the retreat, if you can get that done. I think it's only five questions. So if nothing else, I will look for a motion to adjourn.
So move.
Second, we adjourned at 8:23. Thank you. Thank you, Erica.